I will now call this meeting to order. We have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Closed session items, recommended expulsions, recommended review, continued expulsions, recommended suspended expulsions, public employee assignment, reassignment, appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, conference with real property negotiators, anticipated litigation, and public employee evaluation superintendent. Public comment on any closed session item will be heard at this time pursuant to board policy. The board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Seeing no public comment, the board will now adjourn to closed session. Good evening and welcome. We'll now convene regular schedule, our regular session. Alondra Moran will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of these proceedings, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Alondra Moran servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español, el ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones. Gracias.
This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public who would like to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form, the green form, located on the table at the northeast entrance of this room. Please hand the completed form to Board Manager Monica Andrew before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item on which you would like to comment. Ms. Andrew is sitting at the table in the back of this meeting room. There she is. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. The pledge of allegiance will now be led by Board Member Paul Belt. Please stand.
Join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and consider the public stands one of the institutions under God indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Okay, in closed session on a motion by Board Member Odo and a second by Board Member Gamoyen, the board agreed unanimously to approve a settlement agreement with employee The revisions to enclosure items, there are revisions to item enclosures number 5.1, 7.5, 7.6, 7.11, and 12.1. May I have a motion to adopt the board meeting agenda?
Our motion?
Second.
On a motion by Board Member K. Spears Solano and a second by Board Member Gamoyen, call for a vote.
Student board votes yes. Motion passes 7-0.
All right, and I'd like to welcome Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership, Mark Thompson, for our student performance of the evening.
Before I do the introductions, if you guys would like, tonight, if you want to come out to the audience so we can prepare for that, and then I'll introduce our Golden West students. If you guys would like to start coming in, go ahead and come on in, and we'll introduce you when you come on in. Tonight, we're in for a treat. We have a Golden West High School string quartet, under the direction of Mr. Sosa and Mr. Smith. These students here recently, Golden West High School recently concluded a highly successful winter concert showcasing a fantastic collaboration between the band, dance team, and orchestra inspired by the style of the Rockettes. Additionally, this past week, two of our orchestra members proudly earned spots in our California Honor Orchestra in Santa Monica. Tonight, we invite you to enjoy the selections by these four performers they will be doing, performing tonight. What child is this? And we wish you a Merry Christmas. And the four students we have is June Wei, Angel, Donovan, and Elijah. Take it away, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. And if you've ever played a stringed instrument, you know how amazing that was and the sound that they made. Let's give them one more big hand of applause. Thank you, gentlemen, for your dedication and hard work. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call up Superintendent Schrum for recognition of board member service.
Thank you, President Gaby, board members, and our audience and our guests. At this time, we would like to recognize our outgoing board member, Megan K. Spears Solano. And so I'm going to ask you to come stand awkwardly in the middle of the room so that we can all talk about you. But as Megan comes down and takes the center, we have a plaque that I'm going to present to you that says, Megan K. Spears Solano, Board Member, Visalia Unified School District, Board of Education, November 2020 through December 24, in grateful appreciation of your outstanding service and dedication to the student, staff, and community of Visalia Unified School District. And so, you know, before I came here, you were on the board, you were one of the board members who was, was part of the team that called me here and has been a steadfast supporter focused on what's best for students and all of your actions and all of your commentary and all of your conversations with me. It's always about what are we doing to advance learning for our students? What are we doing to advance opportunities such as our dual immersion program and others for our students to benefit from? And also, how are we taking care of our employees along the way? And I hope our community understands and recognizes what a value you've been on their behalf on the Board of Education for all of our 30,000 students. And so what I'm going to do, I'm going to come present the plaque, let you have that. We'll come and do a photo in a minute, but before we do that, I'll open, I'll turn it back over to President Gaby for any comments. And if you want to stand less awkwardly, maybe over, feel free to do that so that you're not, but, but I did want you to have to, everybody at some point will have to do that. So this is conditioning for that, right? Okay.
Any board member comments? Go ahead.
Well, I just want to say, I might start crying. Sorry. I just want to say it was an honor serving with you. You did a lot to make this a great board. You were part of the board when we got Governance Team of the Year. And I think the thing I'll never forget is how dedicated you are, that you were actually in labor when we were appointing a board member, Randy. And I just love you to death, Megan, and I'm really going to miss you.
Yeah, Walter, you know, took the words right out of my mouth. I, I would not be sitting here if, if not for you and your efforts. And I know of no other person who has that type of resilience, that kind of commitment to championing our community, our staff, our schools. And so I'm just so grateful to be able to serve with you. I know that you're not going anywhere. You'll continue to be an advocate for our schools, for our community, for our students. And, you know, I'm very grateful to have known your family, and I see them here with you tonight. And I just know so many people here in this room and throughout our community who appreciate you and all your efforts and can't wait to see what you do next. Thank you, Megan.
Yeah, I'm going to echo that a little bit because, you know, you are an advocate and you bring such delight when, when you talk and, and your commitment. I feel like I, I know your family. I still remember the floorboards, and that's going to be, that's all I'm going to say. But it's just been a pleasure serving with you, and you will surely be missed.
So I'll jump in here, too. I saw you, your work as a community member, and I've seen your work side by side on the board. You bring something to the board, a perspective that is refreshing because it's kid-focused incessantly, and also your lawyer background and just the fact that you're a mom of young kids. Bring something to the board that we, we haven't had in a while. I've seen lots of board members, very good ones, and some that are good but not as good. You're one of the best that we've had here in this, on this desk. So thank you much for your service.
And Megan, I've always had the nickname for you as mom because that's been the most amazing thing, to see you as a mom of three little ones, an amazing attorney who has a heart for what you do there as well as what you did here. And so we will always remember Megan, mom, was much more than just a, a figurehead. You were, your heart was invested in us, too. So thank you for investing in Visalia Unified.
And yes, I think they said it all, but you stole the floorboards, too. But what I'll say is you're definitely such an integral part in when, there were some tough times on this board, but we're always, you know, met it with just graciousness in class and making the right decision for kids. And so, and that little bit of our lawyer perspective, we're going to lose. There's a lot of times we're like, do we pay that out? Is that what's going to happen in court? And so we've always appreciated also that, just that you bring such a different lens that we will so miss. And not only are you, but I mean, your kids in our programs, our dual immersion, and just that advocate for pushing forward our district. So thank you, and you'll still be part of our district pushing forward. So. This is how dedicated she is. Today, her daughter Inez is three years old. So happy birthday, Inez.
And they did a fabulous job with the pledge of allegiance.
Yes. So at this time, if the board would come down, we'll do a photo, and then, I know you may want to take one with your family as well, so. And then, oh, do you want to say something first before we're photo or?
Um, I, do you want me to do it now? Oh, I left my phone over there.
Oh. Whatever works.
This is new in all the years. Um, okay, so bear with me because Walter has already started making me cry, so I might cry more. I have a hard and fast rule that I've never articulated, I don't think out loud before, and that is that I never let myself talk longer than three minutes. And that is because the public only gets to talk for three minutes during our public comment. And so I've always tried really hard to make sure that I don't talk longer than we allow them to. And so tonight, forgive me because I am going to break my rule, but hopefully by not that much. So this is quite possibly the most bittersweet experience of my life. I am so happy to have served this community and could never say thank you enough for, for the opportunity to do that. But I'm now also on the flip side, which is having to leave without being ready to go. But just like my girl, Taylor Swift, who had to bring an end to her era's tour this past weekend, I too must bring a close to this era of my life, and that comes with a lot of thank yous. So we've become a work family, just like any other work family, and so I'm going to miss you all with all my heart. So thank you again to my community for allowing me this opportunity. Thank you to our students and to all of our staff. You have allowed me to glimpse your classrooms, your performances, your sports games, and so much more, and I will take those experiences with me and cherish them always. Thank you to the district office staff and to the executive cabinet. I could not have been the board member I was without your help along the way and the friendships that we formed. Thank you to Superintendent Schrum. Where'd you go? Oh, you're behind me. For listening, understanding, and shaping the vision that this board had for this district. I'm so happy that I was here to bring you on. You're the best thing that I ever did as board member. And so then, thank you to my fellow board members. It was very kind of you to just say all those wonderful, kind things. You know, in the past four years, I went through a pregnancy, a spinal surgery for my daughter Bianca, and a trip to the ER/ICU at our very own conference. And you have all been with me every single step of the way, supporting me, that includes the cabinet, too. And, you know, celebrating in the good times and quite literally holding my hand in the bad. Thank you, Walter, for coming to that ER that day. And finally, excuse me, thank you to my family, my in-laws, my husband, my daughters. You have all sacrificed so that I could do this, including being here, Inez, on your third birthday. You're still sacrificing, and so thank you, and I hope that I made you proud. Thank you all from the bottom of my hearts. Excuse me. What a joy it has been to represent my community on this board. To have had a hand in steering the direction of our schools to a better place is something that I will carry with me forever. To have participated and witnessed countless amazing things happening in our district has left me with, look at, I can't even read my phone because my eyes are, has left me with an immense pride that I will not soon lose. VUSD is doing great things for children, and we as a board get to contribute to that. So, but things, someone hinted at this, but things have not always been this way. There was COVID. It also took a lot of work from every member of this board and some past ones to realize that we needed to change and work to make our leadership team a role model, role model for what good governance should look like. And boy, did we do that, right, guys? Within two years of dedicating ourselves to being better and putting in the work, we were awarded the Governance Team of the Year award. Us, this board, were chosen above all other boards in the state of California for our exemplary leadership. What an amazing accomplishment. I really will carry that with me forever. So thank you. In preparing these remarks, I started thinking about my strong belief in public education and how to put it into words. What is public education? So as a lawyer, we are trained that it is always okay to use someone else's words and probably best if you can't say it better. And so I looked to the preeminent decision regarding public education, public education, which of course is Brown v. Board of Education, to see what Justice Earl Warren had to say about public education. And so here's what he said. "Today, education is perhaps the most important function of state and local governments. Compulsory school attendance laws and the great expenses for education both demonstrate our recognition of the importance of education to our democratic society. It is required in the performance of our most basic public responsibilities, even service in the armed forces. It is the very foundation of good citizenship. Today, it is a principal instrument in awakening the child to cultural values, in preparing him for later professional training, and in helping him to adjust normally to his environment. In these days, it is doubtful that any child may reasonably be expected to succeed in life if he is denied the opportunity of an education. Such an opportunity where the state has undertaken to provide it is a right which must be made available to all on equal terms. Do not forget this: Public education is the most important function of the government, and it is a right available to all. So make it work, listen to each other, be guided not by politics or outspoken voices but by what is best for all students. I know you can continue to do this. We're all counting on you. Our kids are counting on you. Thank you."
Okay. Everybody ready in three, two, one. Ready, two, one, one more than five. Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent Schrum, for spotlights on good things happening in the district.
Thank you, President Gaby, board members and community. As we go into our spotlight, this will be our last one before the winter break. And so, of course, that's obviously a spotlight for a lot of our students and teachers. Looking forward to that winter break here in just another week. Couple of things to, to share in our spotlight tonight. Starting with our career days, many elementary schools across the district continue to host career days. We have some images here from Oak Grove and Washington Elementary where community members came out to showcase their profession, inspire, upgrade students in future pathways. We have local law enforcement, district attorney's office, real estate agencies, and many more. A huge thank you to our community partners who make these events possible. Oh, I got one ahead. As I was saying, there's career day, I think it was on the Turkey, you know? So, I mean, you know, maybe appropriate or not, I don't know. Okay, here we go, spotlights on Turkey trotting. We have some elementary schools also hosted theme events around think giving events to inspire healthy behaviors like walking and running. We have images here from A.R. Mitchell, Washington, and Mountain View Elementary. Congratulations to our Oak Grove Robotics Team. They won first place in the LEGO League Qualifier Tournament in Clovis in November. The Oak Grove LEGO Robotics Team earned first place. They received the Champions Award coming in first of the 30 Valley teams that competed in the All-Day Challenge. The students, the student team name is Shazam, a play on the first names of the students on the team, and you see them listed there. Exciting to highlight this and also connect it to, you know, our strategic plan. Our strategic plan, we have a whole action around how do we create and make these advanced learning opportunities available to all of our sites? And so I'm so excited about how this is going to materialize over the next few years, whether it's robotics, STEAM, or other opportunities across all of our elementary sites. So thank you, Oak Grove, for helping to lead the way with that. Oh, the team is here. I'm sorry, I did not have that. Would you all please come up and be recognized? Thank you. But you can come and stand awkwardly. And if they're principal, I don't know if your teachers are here, if you want to join in for a quick photo there? We'll have our photographer here.
Gotcha. Awesome.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you, team, for letting me know. I did not, I did not have that down, so I just thought you were here to watch a board meeting, you know? So, but congratulations. And again, thank you for setting an example of, of what's to come and what we want to build out in Visalia Unified. Continuing with our advanced learning, we see a STEAM night here at Washington. We've talked about these before. These were started last year, and they're back at nine elementary sites this school year. These are interactive events designed to encourage families with the opportunity to explore science, technology, engineering, and math. This year, there's an emphasis on engineering design, and the goal of STEM nights is to spark interest for both students and adults. And I can say, having attended some of those last year, they were very, very large community turnout of our students. Over at Redwood High School, students, parents, and staff, and community partners participated in 30 interactive booths, six workshop sessions to help support mental health and well-being, college and career readiness, technology, and more. This event has had great participation, and we're thankful for the work done to make this event possible. Now, you know, La Jolla, we've mentioned them before, and here they are again. Watch out, other schools. So last month, we highlighted La Jolla for being recognized as a promising practicing school by Solution Tree. Today, we recognize La Jolla for receiving two special honors, a California Schools to Watch as a Middle School and a National Forum Schools to Watch. These honors recognize La Jolla for its excellence in academics, social equity, developmental responsiveness, and organizational practices. This award is through, it's a rigorous process, includes an in-depth application, a site visit, and then somehow, even after interviewing some of our team and our board president, we're still here. So that when we say rigorous, they talk to all of us. And so La Jolla, along with Visalia Unified, that we're going to celebrate this this spring. But I just want to give a shout out to the principal, the staff, teachers, and students, and parents, so proud of these recognitions. So congratulations. And this, again, this drive for excellence is so important because at the end of the day, these things represent the work of a team, of the school, but ultimately benefiting our students because they come from what our students are accomplishing. And, and I won't, it's going to be coming in a future spotlight, but we have a couple of other schools that are going to be receiving some recognitions as well that I'm very excited about, and we'll save that. But just, just this recognition that it's about doing the best job we can, and while awards come along the way, that's not why we're doing it. We're doing it because it's what's right for kids. And so congratulations to that school and several others to come. Our CIF Central Section Cross Country Championships, want to congratulate all of our teams there. Congratulations to these individual students from Mount Whitney, Redwood, and El Diamante who had top finishes. The Ujima Collective, this was started several years ago, held their Leadership Advisory at the Neighborhood Church. This is the third year of this collective as part of our Black Excellence Initiative, bringing together students from all four comprehensive high schools and our other schools focused on improving the black student experience in Visalia Unified. Students in the advisory participate in leadership development and help create culturally inclusive environments through their student groups. They engage in learning about community building, communication skills, self advocacy, financial literacy, social networking, and leadership, all aimed at fostering personal growth and school engagement. Thank you. Thank you to these students, their teachers, their counselors, and others that have supported this collective for these past few years, and very excited to see this continuing and growing. Spotlights continue on our sites with our Resource Fair. Building Futures First Five Program hosted its third annual Resource Fair at Goshen Elementary. Over 60 families attended this event, where they received information on community resources, food boxes, jackets, backpacks, and others. Huge success, and it couldn't have been possible without the collaboration of the Building Futures and Goshen Elementary. Recently, we held another great event in the district each year, is our eighth grade CTE Showcase. This Career Technical Education Showcase and Recruitment Fair took place at Mount Whitney this past month. All eighth grade students across the district get to engage in specialized lessons during this event, and CTE teachers share their programs through hands-on activities. We've been really focused on how do we continue to expose our middle school students to these opportunities way before they get to high school, and this is just one example of that. And after the event, students update their career interests and use this information as they think about the elective courses they sign up for in January. College Application Workshop, the Equity and Student Services College and Career Department hosted our first district-wide college application workshop. Students had the opportunity to complete their applications and ask questions. We had University's Fresno State, UC Merced, and our counselors. And again, this connects back to our Bulldog Bound and our other programs that we've started where our students can receive guaranteed admission. So, this is all about helping them understand that process and being prepared and getting their applications and other pieces, financial aid, and all of those other pieces in. Ignite Your Curiosity Career Night. Students and families had the opportunity to explore different career paths and speak with professionals about their career journeys. We had individuals all the way from the FBI to healthcare providers and business owners. Over 100 community members attended the event, and students from elementary, middle, and high school. Also, students from Redwood Engineering's Law and Justice Academy volunteered, serving as moderators. As we know, Visalia is an amazing community. We're coming up on the winter holidays, and we want to make sure we're taking care of all of our families as best we can. And so, great organization Assistant League of Visalia collaborates with VUSD throughout the year to host philanthropic events, including Operation School Bell. This is the third event of the year, and nearly 500 students had the opportunity to shop. This longstanding partnership, including, as I said, Operation School Bell, the Assistant League also held a fundraising opportunity at Barnes &amp; Noble Bookstore to donate books back to our school. We appreciate this partnership with Assistant League of Visalia. Continuing with this, our Visalia Seventh Day Adventist Church graciously donated pumpkin pies. It went to over 150 families, and we're proud again of this partnership and the impact they have on our communities. Several members of our board and our district staff had the opportunity to participate in the recent Candy Cane Lane Parade, and very proud to say that our Transportation Department won the Sweepstakes Award for Decorated Entries. And this is the second year we've participated. I think our Transportation Department's been participating for a while, but you see their winning entry, which is our Grinch Bus there on the far right. And so, congratulations to our transportation team and employees who participated in that So, we'll aspire to, we just had golf carts, so we'll, but that was okay. But, you know, so proud of the, I saw their bus, and I was like, oh, you know, but very worthy. And just appreciate, you know, what's exciting about that is, as you're going through, so many of the families and community recognize not only VUSD, our bus, and our transportation team, but also our district staff, and it's just so exciting to see them shout "Yay VUSD" and "School" and all of those things, and apparently playing rock, paper, scissors along the parade route is a thing. And so, we get to practice that each year. And we typically lose. So, spotlight on district observances. Lots of things happening in December. We have National Special Education Day. We have a monthly podcast on kindness, admissions videos, our typical highlights, holiday messages, and so you can see the events there. And also, continuing with social media, financial savings, as you know, with our renegotiating of our bonds and saving our taxpayer money, High Five Friday, Thanksgiving break announcement, just to name a few. And so, Madam President, that concludes the spotlight.
Thank you. And yes, I do think I lost every rock, paper, scissors, but it was very cool that the community really does shout "Go VUSD!" And that's a reflection on the school sites, obviously, not on us at all. That means those kids are excited that, you know, we represent their school, and that's very cool. And as for CTE, very strategic move by VTIC to bring the goats out. They had quite a following over there, so very cool events. Thank you. Back on general public comment, on any topic not on the agenda may be heard at this time. If you have a public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for you to share your comments at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. Pursuant to board policy, the board will limit individual comments for general public comment to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open public meeting law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments, and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibilities. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Is there any general public comment related to a school topic not on tonight's agenda? I think I do have one. I'm going to, can I have you hit the button so we can hear? Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So, I am here as a parent and as a mandated reporter. I am, I'm going to share what took place with my child at school. He attends Cottonwood Creek. On 11/21/24, I had a parent-teacher conference. Students were released at 12:30 that day. My son went home distressed and took a nap. As I attended my meeting at 4:15, after my parent-teacher conference, I was then notified that my son was threatened by another student, that he would be shot and killed if he didn't get up and move from his seat. I then pursued to ask the teacher what was her protocol for this. She said she had to care of everything. She couldn't release too much because it was confidential. Then to come and find out, I left right away, came straight here. They advised me they would get me a meeting in the morning with the principal and the people who were involved. In the middle of the night, at 10, I received a call from the vice principal sharing his concerns and his anger for it not being properly reported. They didn't mention to me in the morning, I had a meeting at 7:00 in the morning, so I missed that meeting. However, everybody else was there but me. I then got a phone call around 8:15 asking why I wasn't at the meeting. I then let them know I spoke to vice principal at 10 o'clock the night before. Nothing of a meeting was brought up. So, I then was told I could go in whenever I would like to have the meeting. So, I left work immediately, went down there to find out that when I had asked the teacher if things were taken care of and reported, nothing had been reported of that nature. So, as I'm in the office finding out, I did request for a child welfare check because I made a police report that same night on my own. In the morning, I then found out they did not have the child's proper address, so they cannot follow their proper protocol to sending an officer down. Later on that day, I was then notified around 5:00. They did do a welfare check. There was no weapon in the home of the other child. However, when I was talked to, they did let me know they were terribly sorry that they didn't follow proper protocol. I then began to ask more questions as far as if that was a proper protocol that they felt for a third-grade teacher as an advocate of students. These guys are little. They don't think, as us adults, we know the severity of the case. We see things like this all the time. You don't take things like this lightly. I understand the child made a hand gesture at my son. Nothing was taken under consideration, no counseling. I did not find out roughly until 4:50. My son did not come home telling me about it. So, had the teacher not told me towards the end of my conference, I had, would have no clue. But that is a little bit of what had went on with me, and I just wanted to make sure that these teachers and staff are understanding their proper protocol with something so severe like this.
Thank you. And you did leave, you left the papers also as well that you wrote? Did you say?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other public comment, move to consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item from consent agenda?
Yes, President Gaby, I would like to pull item 7.19. That is the Architecture Agreement for Scoreboards and Community Stadium and Mineral King Bowl.
Got it. May I have a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
I'll motion.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member K. Spears Salina and a second by Board Member Gamoyen.
Motion passes. Student Board vote yes, and Board Member 7-0.
Okay. Item 7.19. May I have a motion to accept?
Sure. I'm just clarifying real quick that the reason I pulled this one was I have a family member who is employed with TEATER, and therefore, to avoid any perception of a conflict of interest, I will be abstaining from this item.
Gotcha.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. And a motion by Board Member K. Spears Salina and a second by Board Member Naylor.
Student Board votes yes. Motion passes six with one abstention.
Perfect. All right. Student Representative Report, Diego Medina Gutierrez.
Thank you, Board President Gaby. So, starting off with El Diamante. El Diamante ASB hosted their Welcome Back Hot Cocoa event, where students had the chance to submit any winter wishes they had. El Diamante ASB is preparing for their upcoming dress-up days during finals week. December 16th is PJ Day, and December 17th is Ugly Stryder Day. Both days have lunch activities during the week. El Diamante Choir Winter Concert is December 10th, and Orchestra and Band Winter Concert is December 19th. All programs have put on hard work to put on amazing performances. El Diamante held a Care Kit Drive, collecting necessities from different clubs and students to put together these kits to donate to homeless shelters. Moving on to Golden West High School, Golden West is currently working directly with their feeder schools on their annual Adopt a Star program, and they are excited to announce that all of their stars have been adopted. This year, Golden West granted a few wishes for students at their campus with their annual Small Wishes Event. Looking ahead, Golden West is excited to be getting ready for their Morning Cocoa with counselors to kick off the week of finals and wish everyone a wonderful winter break. Moving on to Mount Whitney High School, Mount Whitney High School will host its annual BAPA Showcase this Friday at the Visitero Middle School. This special event provides a fantastic opportunity to introduce future pioneers to the incredible talents of our band, jazz band, dance, drama, and choir programs. A proud pioneer tradition, the showcase highlights the best of their visual and performing arts. Mount Whitney High School is preparing for their inaugural final countdown lip sync contest. This exciting event is designed to build momentum leading into final exams while fostering fun connections between students and staff. Participants will battle it out for the Golden Mic Award. Don't miss this epic showcase. Mount Whitney High School hosted a successful winter formal with the theme being Frozen Fairy Tale. This event even had a snow machine. The kids were definitely not frozen, but danced the night away to the final song. Great collaboration from all schools. Mount Whitney High School will finish the semester strong with ASB supporting jolly, fun-filled dress-up days. ASB will also be handing out cocoa, candy canes, and ornaments. Moving on to Redwood High School, Redwood High School participated in the Winter Formal Frozen Fairy Tale hosted at Mount Whitney High School. It was a successful event with good fun, food, and friends. The JV Girls Soccer Team won the Dinuba JV Soccer Tournament, and the JV Girls Basketball Team took second place in their tournament over the weekend. The Redwood Competition Cheer Team competed in the CIF Central Invitational this weekend. It was the first competition of their season. 14 Redwood students attended the 2024 Cota Honor Orchestra in Santa Monica. Moving on to VCIS, VCIS hosted its Performing Arts Showcase on February, December 6. It was a great performance, and the students did a great job showcasing their talent and hard work over the past semester. The VCIS Certified Nursing Technician Cohort recently began its externship placement at West Gate Garden Skilled Nursing Facility this past month. The 14 students are doing amazing and representing VCIS and VUSD very well. Moving on to VTIC, VTIC ASB hosted its Winter Wonderland Movie Night, a huge success in building student connections. VTIC Clubs and FFA had a large turnout for the Candy Cane Lane Parade. Students enjoyed showcasing the theme of Christmas in Whoville. VTIC ASB continuously plans connections activities for students. The ASB students recently decorated the campus with a winter/seasonal theme and had students create supportive wintergram messages. Finally, the Superintendent Student Advisory Group has not met since the last board meeting, but they are excited to regroup for the new semester in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Reports. We'll start this way this time. Board Member Vegas.
Thank you, President Gaby. Just wanted to give a quick thank you to all of our staff, community, administrators for, you know, pushing through another semester. I hope you're all looking towards a well-deserved break and a restful break. Secondly, I just wanted to highlight one of our previous board policies as I've reached, I've gotten several questions from community members regarding immigration enforcement and whether or not their children will be safe at school. And so, I wanted to take a moment just to read a little bit from our Board Policy 5145.13A, which is a response to immigration enforcement. The governing board is committed to the success of all students and believes that every school site should be a safe and welcoming place for all students and their families, irrespective of their citizenship or immigration status. District staff shall not solicit or collect information or documents regarding the citizenship or immigration status of students or their family members, or provide assistance to immigration enforcement at all school districts, except as may be required by state and federal law. No student shall be denied equal rights and opportunities, nor be subjected to unlawful discrimination, harassment, intimidation, or bullying of the district's programs, activities on the basis of their immigration status. Teachers, school staff, and administrators shall receive training regarding immigration issues, including information responding to requests from an immigration officer to visit a school site and to have access to any student. In addition to this, resources and data collected by the district shall not be used directly or by others to compile lists, register your database of individuals based on national origin, immigration status, religion, or other category of individual characteristics protected against unlawful discrimination. District staff shall receive parent or guardian consent before a student is interviewed by any officer seeking to enforce civil immigration laws at the school unless that officer presents a valid effective warrant signed by a judge or a valid effective court order. In short, I want to assure our community that our district staff is here for students and that students will be safe at their school sites moving forward. In addition to this, though, we do not currently have a Dreams Resource Center in our district. I wanted to share that there will be an opportunity for families, students, and community members. January 16th at College of the Sequoias, we will be having several attorneys, pro bono attorneys, coming to provide free general immigration consultation, DACA renewals, and citizenship screenings for those who may be eligible for citizenship moving forward. So, I want to encourage anyone who is able to take opportunity of that to please come, please attend, inform other family members, et cetera, as relevant to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Odo.
Yeah, wanted to join Randy in wishing staff and students a good ending to the current semester and a great break. From a board member business perspective, attended Viva Blunt Elementary, had a great visit there, VISA Education Foundation meeting in the last couple of weeks, and then also attended the CSBA, California School Boards Association Annual Conference this past week. Great chance to get updated on school finance issues and issues related to updates in laws regarding the operation of schools. A good visit, and appreciate the opportunity to do that and to have some time with staff there as well to talk about the business of the district. Upcoming this week, on Friday, actually, I've got a visit to La Jolla, visit to El Diamante High School, and also going to attend the LVN Penning on Friday. So, it's the end of the road for those vocational nurses and their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Gamoyen.
I just wanted to take some time talking about our course outlines. We approved some course outlines on our consent agenda tonight, and I just want to thank teachers, content specialists, directors for the work they do. These course outlines were amazing. My favorite one was the My favorite one was the CTE Career Experience, which is for seventh and eighth grade middle school. And what these, what our students will be able to do is explore career options with hand on, hands on labs with different careers, which will prepare them to make smart decisions going into high school as far as what pathway they want to follow, you know, if they want to be part of our, our, one of our academies. And so they can make wise choices well before they get into high school. So I just want to commend the whole teaching and learning department for that. That was amazing, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Casebeers Salina.
I think I already spoke enough tonight, I already cried, so, so no report.
Board Member Belt.
I want to echo the seventh, eighth grade CTEI sitting on the advisory committee for that and thank you for the leadership of our newly appointed Ms. Frame. She's gathering, gathering quite a coalition of community folks as well as educators who have that focus to make sure that our seventh, eighth graders are able to actually have a robust introduction to CTE. And what we'll see is that we'll have even more in our compulsory high schools being exposed to it and taking part in it because they found out about it early on and, and some hands on things as Board Member Gamoyen mentioned. The Candy Cane Lane Parade was singularly a fun, cool evening, meaning we had blankets and everything else to stay warm. And I don't understand the rock, paper, scissors thing all the way down the street either, but kids really enjoyed it, so we were sitting there just giving them scissors, scissors, scissors. Want to thank so much, I'm, I am on track to actually complete all forty-two school sites this school year in visiting them. It's a little bit often too formal for me, but today we broke some of that formality as Principal Corliss was already giving some good insight as to lots of success things, particularly the, our newcomers class, that is pretty remarkable to see five, six languages being shared to welcome in these amazing new immigrants to our schools. The, the day in the life of a middle school principal though is never predictable. And so when the young kid had a bleeding gash, looked like it was from his forehead, but come to find out it was under his eye, Principal Corliss jumped right into EMT mode and made sure that very little blood tracked all the way across the campus to the nurse's office, but took care of it in short order as I held her coffee. That's what I'm good for. The principal's job also continues to be something that I, I myself would never really want to step into except for maybe a day. And to see Principal Sines at Houston, who we acknowledge has had some tremendous increase in outcomes, that's what we're all about, we want to see that happen. They've had some phenomenal growth in the last year. And so today to actually see and, and introduce our operations director to closed and open syllables in second grade or is that third grade? It was quite remarkable to watch how they are able to dissect and understand English and, and actually go forward with better understanding much more than just, just the phonetics, just the enunciations, but how does language get built and how do sentences and words go together? Every time I walk into a class and they're doing that, I'm just really amazed because I, I never, I don't think I ever did that either. As well as the math integration we saw in Mrs. Brown's class today as well. The CSBA week, we could talk a long time, lots of input, lots of opportunity for us as a staff to just have side by side conversations of what we're looking at, what we're seeing, how, how our lives integrate to everything else we're doing here for Visalia Unified. But there were many, many, what we call those breakout seminars, opportunities that I brought back some of those things to be able to pass on to our staff, particularly in the whole area of artificial intelligence that for many of us, that's a scary thing and yet it's already here, they already know where you're buying your toilet paper and so forth and make sure you see that next ad. We're looking at how to adapt that well and setting policy. So thank you so much, Mr. Thompson, for having some leadership that way. So that here in the spring, we will have some very clear guidelines, guardrails and incentives, excited about how we can use AI in the classroom and without worrying about, is it cheating, is it shorting their education? No, we're embracing the opportunity to make a good use of technology. And then last but not least, I want to say kudos to Golden West High School for making it into the playoffs, having an amazing season that abruptly came to an end surprisingly, but those young men showed integrity and character to the very end and were good sports about being shocked by the school that they're playing. I won't mention it, we all know who they are, the private school from across town. But thank you, Golden West and the culture we're seeing there, so much by the coach who has made a huge difference. So congratulations.
Thank you. Board Clerk Naylor.
So I'll make it brief, everyone has said everything that I was going to say, so I'm just gonna, just wanted to thank our staff from custodian all the way up to our cabinet for all your hard work this last semester. You know, our kids matter and it shows in every, everything you do, every decision you make. And so just take a, I hope you have a well rusted winter break and come back refreshed to start a second semester. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, everything has been mentioned, but I will say an extra thank you to Board Member Gamoyen for going early to CSBA and being our delegate and advocating, you know, not only for our district but districts, you know, in our valley here. And then also thank you for the visit to Houston today and got to catch up with Principal Sines and thank you for her leadership there because definitely making some, some growth there that was evident in last year's scores and just in, you know, teaching and learning. So awesome. And Superintendent Shrum.
Thank you, I do want to echo for continuing our tradition, our third year of our board attending CSBA, including Board Member Elect De Young as well for new board member orientation and training. And so that was exciting that this board makes that commitment to their professional development and models that for incoming board as well. And so continuing that now, may, may have been before I was here, but at least for the three years I've been here, that's been happening and so really appreciate that. Also echo all the great work that's occurred this semester and we have a lot that we're looking forward to. We'll talk about some of that tonight, but as we really begin in earnest to work on building out that strategic plan so that these opportunities that we hear about exist all across our district. And I think that's what's so very important and, and different as we think about how we're leading into the future. And so great, exciting things happening for our kids, for our staff, for our community as we continue this work that the board's committed to with our strategic plan and the outcomes that you've set as far as five year, five year goals that we will strive to achieve. And so I do also echo, we will have one more meeting, we do have a board meeting next week, which will be the opportunity for our oath of office, for our continuing of new board members as well as student awards. So a great way to round out the semester and so I'll save the, the happy holiday wishes, well, I'll do them now and then. So happy holidays to everyone and we hope that you also have a great winter break and stay focused, we've got five, six, seven, eight more days to go if I'm counting correctly. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, all right. May I have a motion to approve the recommended expulsions?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
All right, on a motion by Board Member Casebeers Salina and a second by Board Member Belt.
Student Board abstains, motion carries seven oh.
May I have a motion to approve the recommended continued expulsions?
I'll motion.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Casebeers Salina and a second by Board Member Gamoyen.
Student Board abstains, motion carries seven oh.
And one more, may I have a motion to approve the recommended suspended expulsions?
I'll motion.
Oh, I'll second.
Sorry.
All right, on a motion by Board Member Vegas and a second by Board Member Casebeers Salina, call for a vote.
Student Board abstains, motion passes seven oh.
All right, I, Public Hearing and Resolution Approving Attendance Boundary Adjustments and Notice of Exemption Under California Environmental Quality Act. I will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item. First call up Presenter Chief Operations Officer Eric Keir.
Good evening, President Gabi, Superintendent Shrum, members of the board and community. This is our second read for our short term facilities plan. I'm not going to go through the whole, the whole presentation again. What you see on the screen is our, what we call plan on a page. I did want to add that we, we did have some, we had three community meetings over the last few weeks. There have been no substantive changes to the plan and so we're just bringing it back for a second read and approval tonight.
All right, I do have two public comments, so, let's see, just making sure I didn't have to close. All right, Josh McDonald.
Good evening, President and Board, thank you so much. My name is Josh McDonald, I'm an alum of Visalia Unified and a current parent of a student at Visalia Unified. First, I applaud the board for bringing this subject up. This is always a very difficult subject. I observed from very afar the last time around, thank goodness, because I didn't want to have anything to do with it. It's a complex and emotional task, I very much get that and it can often be a source of consternation amongst parents. Change is difficult, change is difficult for anybody. So thank you to you, Board, for, and Superintendent, for bringing this forward for some consideration. But, you knew there was going to be a but. I do have a couple of thoughts that I'd like your board to consider as you consider this. The middle school boundary adjustments, they remain mildly distressing to me primarily from a socioeconomic perspective and this really all boils down to Ridgeview and a couple of the other middle schools where there is a very substantial socioeconomic difference between those particular middle schools. For example, with RidgeU being at about forty-seven percent, De Visitero and Valley Oak being all the way up to sixty-five percent, those, those are substantial differences and that's a concern. The elementary school boundary shifts would actually exacerbate that difference and create about forty-three percent for Ridgeview. So the lower down, kind of the richer the school is, right? So in other words, what may end up resulting is this, the rich school is getting a little bit richer. The more stark difference occurs, difference occurs at the high school level and this is, this is a tougher one. Only thirty-six percent of the students at Redwood are living in disadvantaged situation whereas opposed to Mount Whitney, it's sixty-two percent. That is a very stark difference, of course. The proposed boundary shifts, they wouldn't exacerbate that, so good, but they're not going to make it any better. And I think that this is a golden opportunity for your board and for this school district to, to really make some fundamental change by addressing what's at the crux of the issue, which is the feeder school situation and the boundaries of where the feeder schools go. And I'm, I'm really hoping that if it doesn't occur tonight, I do understand that there's a long-term plan and perhaps that is something that your board would seriously consider as addressing. I understand this is, it created, create crazy consternation the last time that this was brought up, what, twelve years ago or whatever the number is. The last item for you to consider is Redwood itself. Redwood is by far and away the most overcrowded high school, right? And there's really, there's some discussion about really checking the address status of the incoming ninth graders, but not necessarily really anything else other than this hope to reduce transfers in by a hundred and fifty students. My suggestion is really to just make it far more clear, prohibit transfers in, period, except in crazy situations that would be subject to the superintendent's review and approval. And really rethink whether or not the, the academies at Redwood should be moved to a different campus to help alleviate that overcrowding. Thank you very much, Board.
Thank you. Joel Moore?
I promise we didn't share notes at all. I expressed that my name is Joel Moore and I had the same concerns, I'm very excited about the process, I attended all the meetings, did all the questionnaires, I probably did more, spent three hours answering to different people's questions until I realized what I was doing. But I, I just looked at those inner cities and it's weird to say Visalia has an inner city school, but I just look at the older schools, Coneyer, GLC, Houston, these schools that are being fed with these students and I drive through those neighborhoods, I see the disparity between Mooney on the east side and the west side or Rigan on the north side and the south side. And I just, it, it strikes me as so scary for these students to be stuck in a school where they look at the other school and say, well, why do the wealthier kids get to go to that school when I get to go to this school? My kids are going to be going to De Visitero in Mount Whitney, which I'm excited for, I'm a Mount Whitney alum, so I'm very excited about that. But I don't want Mount Whitney to be forgotten and looking at the numbers, it looks like Mount Whitney's been forgotten because many students aren't transferring into Mount Whitney, they're going to Redwood, which was the arch enemy, if you will. And so I just hope that you guys look at that process as you guys go through this process. I know it's been fifteen years since we've updated these boundaries and so I'm excited that you're willing to look at them instead of moving these elementary and, and Redwood, I thought that was a crazy idea to begin with. And I just look forward to what you guys do, what your vision is for giving these kids a, a better future, for exciting them about education and giving them a vision of something better than their neighborhood or their friends and what they're doing in their own neighborhood. And yeah, I'm just very excited and thank you for the process. Thank you for the process of being as a community, going to see these presentations, being able to vote and put in our, our notes and put in our own questions and then respond even to the community members. That was just a, a great opportunity, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any board member comments? Oh, any other public comments? All right, any board member comments?
Yeah, um, I, Mr. Randy, I'm just going to call you Randy, Dr. Vegas. Dr. Vegas brought this up actually at the last board meeting about the socioeconomic disparity that we are seeing, I appreciate the comment about that. I know I won't be here when we talk about the long-term plan, but I really do want to emphasize that I agree that that is very important in the planning of our, of our communities. And so I too concur and hope that that is something that we can look to adjust in our long-term planning. And then I, I also wanted to indicate it, I appreciate you sir coming to talk about Mount Whitney and De Visitero, my kids too will be going to De Visitero and Mount Whitney one day. And so I think that the more people we have in our community who can continue, you know, a lot of the community talks about Redwood. What we need are, my husband's also a Mount Whitney alum, what we need are lots of alumni and, and current community members to continue to talk up the fact that all of our schools have amazing programs and amazing staff. And I think that we will see kind of that change that, that we're hoping to see in driving our, our decision-making forward. And then I too get to look at my fellow board members and say, I know this is going to be really hard for you and, and best of luck, I know you guys will do what's right.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
Just want to say, yeah, I, I too used to teach at Mount Whitney many, many years ago, so I, you know, I say I bleed maroon and white. I have a son and a daughter-in-law that teaches there, it's a great school. My kids went to Mount Whitney, De Visitero, Mount Whitney, they have a great education and I keep preaching that to everybody because it is, we've got amazing teachers there and I do agree, you know, that's one of my main focuses to, to get Mount Whitney up, you know, the enrollment up so that we can have lots of opportunities for our kids there because it is an amazing school and we have, all of our schools are good. Let's face it, we have great teachers, we have great staff, but I, I appreciate your comment because we do need to ensure that our schools are equitable as best we can and sometimes that's a little difficult, that long-term plan is what we're looking at, but also just that we have the numbers to allow our kids to have those great opportunities.
Thank you. Ditto, thank you to everybody's comments, something I highlighted at our last meeting and at the board workshop session, I think it is very important for our schools to be reflective of our community according to our dashboard, about sixty-seven point six percent of our student population is considered low or socioeconomically disadvantaged and our schools should be reflective of that to the best of our ability to make sure that students are able to foster friendships across socioeconomic status, to build collaboration, to be exposed to different ideas and to really be reflective of our community as a whole. And so I hope that is something we can deeply take into consideration as a board. I think the way I put it in one of our board workshop sessions was like, I, I don't want a board ten years from now thinking, darn, like, how are we dealing with these boundaries? Like, we could have, the, the board from twenty twenty-four could have, you know, made bigger adjustments and those tougher decisions and I'm hoping that we can deeply pay attention to that moving forward. With that being said, one request that I would ask of staff moving forward as we go to long-term planning is that we got the socioeconomic data of our middle schools and our high schools, the socioeconomic data of our elementary schools was not present in the presentation, and so I would like to see the socioeconomic diversity of our schools at the elementary level, though I understand that the intention is to have the sort of neighborhood-school model. I think it's important for those elementaries to also be reflective of our community, and perhaps that also helps shape the way we think about feeder patterns as we think about long-term planning and to make sure our schools are equitable and that all of our students have the opportunity to see the amazing things at all of these schools. So, thank you all for this discussion. I hope we can continue to think about this as we do long-term planning.
President Gaby, if I might add too, I would like to remind all of us and all of our staff and anyone who's listening, schools are not wealthier or richer. Schools are not wealthier or richer. We work very, very hard diligently to make sure that our schools are equal, and we use that word equitable, and we throw it around quite a bit. And in order to bring up some of these shortcomings because of neighborhoods, we would probably have to enter into the 70s or the 60s where I grew up, and that experiment failed miserably, busing people across town just to make it richer or poorer. And so I want to remind everyone, we have endeavored to make every school excellent, and no school should ever be labeled as richer or poorer or wealthier than another school because they aren't. Yes, homes cost more in certain areas, and some people have more bank accounts that are larger in some areas, but it's a perception, it's a perspective of whether or not we are rich or poor in our hearts and minds and our futures. We live in America where it's boundless what your future can be, and that's what we need to be teaching, and that's what we need to be emphasizing as Visalia Unified School District. Every student, every day, will have the opportunity to learn at their maximum for a maximum future.
If I can clarify one thing in regards to that, I also want to emphasize the distribution and equity of our funding, right? Because when we talk about how much money each site receives, when we look at things like ADA, right, though schools themselves, our institutions, our buildings, our staff, our teachers, it's not necessarily about one school, as you put it, being richer or poorer, but is it reflective of the community as a whole, right? Are all of our schools truly a reflection of the communities that we serve? And then I think that's a bigger point I'm trying to emphasize. That being said, we do need to invest more into our schools with students with higher numbers of lower socioeconomic students, just recognizing that they don't have the same tools or resources as students who may come from more affluent families or backgrounds, et cetera. So, thank you.
And just to be very blunt, we do, as a district, provide the same services to our students. However, I do think that what the community is commenting and noting is that there are things like PTAs, and that very much affects your school's ability to fund things for students. And so when we have schools that are very socioeconomically disadvantaged, it very much does have an impact on what we are able, or what those schools are able to do in addition to additional things. And I point this out knowing that I visited Washington not that long ago, and Washington hasn't had a PTA in a couple of years, I think. I do think they're getting one off the ground right now, but even just to do that, they're needing assistance from their fellow, like nearby schools' PTA systems to help them. And so we do, it is definitely something that exists, and we have to live in that reality of it.
So, just a couple of comments for some depth or perspective here. You know, the hardest thing that a Board member does is to expel a student. Taking a kid out of a school for a period of time is hard, but the most traumatic thing school boards do is look at boundaries and kids and what schools they go to and shift those things from time to time. Over time, in this district, what has become the most common tool is the boundary shift, and we wait a long time to do that because it is traumatic. You kind of don't want to do it too soon because you don't want to have people angry and upset and kids disappointed and schools disrupted and parents and families disrupted, kids disrupted by making changes. But I think what we've learned over time here and what's evident in the approach that we've taken now, which is short- and long-term planning, is that we're going to, as a large community and as an intelligent organization, I hope, that we're going to have periodically short-term changes to where kids go to school. Because as the community grows in ways that are planned and unplanned, we have to adjust to that. But there also has to be an overarching long-term plan for the longer-reached, longer, you know, envisioned, things that can be done, and that's where we're headed next in this process. And I hope the community looks deeply at what the suggestions or possibilities are because those are the things that'll cause us less pain and digestion trauma over a longer period of time if we can be as smart and as capable with those, excuse me, that work as we can. You know, the fact of the matter is, it's hard work to do. I am pleased by the depth of communication that's going on between staff and community with this process here, and I think what we've gotten to now, for short-term at least, is the moves that are being made, the eight elements of the plan that's being considered are thoughtfully done to be as least impactful as possible on kids and families, but as most impactful as possible with regard to the outcome. And there are things inside those eight plans that you might scratch your head and say, wow, why? How come? Couldn't this be better? And the answer is, maybe so. But the fact of the matter is, they're the best we can achieve at this time, and we're going to have to lean on long-term planning to get farther down the road and to be as clear as possible with issues related to equity and access, equity and neighborhood development. We have to work hand-in-hand with the city, right, Josh, to make sure these things happen? Josh was a student of mine, first class I taught at Mount Whitney back in 1987. But really, we have to be thoughtful on a broader scale, perhaps, in just school board and school staff and school, to make the best outcomes for kids and schools. We've done good work here, short-term. I hope people are attentive to the long-term work that will be coming, and I hope we have great conversations around that about the destination or work for our middle-to-long-term future. Thank you.
President Gaby, if I can add one more thing. I appreciate that we have made a priority to whittle away at the, some estimations I would say, a waste of the $2.2 million we spend every year leasing temporary buildings, portables. That that's made a major priority in our setting the short-term goals and long-term goals is to put that money back into education rather than to leases, renting. It's like, how many of you are renting? How many of you are purchasing things? It's not a wise use of $2 million. And I want to remind our community that this plan does that. It doesn't do it enough, but it does make a reduction of nearly $400,000 a year in those leases. And then, understanding that we're not adding portables anywhere. We had, I had an email earlier this week that purported that. That is not happening. Our short-term plan that we are going to look at right now and vote on has no additional portables. It only has a reduction of that money being, going down the drain.
You know, I just want to make it clear, a couple of things eminently clear. I'm not sure exactly what people mean our schools need to be equitable. I think that's different than them being socioeconomically balanced because I truly believe, and if you look at our strategic plan, our schools are equitable. The kids that need more support, more resources are going to get them because they need them, and they need them to be successful. That is in our plan, that is what we are committed to. We have not forgotten Mount Whitney. Mount Whitney is always in the back of my mind. We've got an amazing principal over there. We're going to do great things at that school. So, short of, I think we're going to have to be really creative because in my mind, and maybe I'm really limited, I don't know how, so these are discussions we're going to have, how to make schools, every school socioeconomically balanced without busing kids. So, maybe I'm limited in my thinking, and I think maybe we're going to have to have discussions on that. And busing will cost a lot of money, and if you believe in climate change, that could be an issue. So, a lot of things to think about.
All right. Well, I don't have anything more eloquent to conclude with, so.
I have one more thing, President. I just wanted to very briefly say thank you to Eric Kerr, Steve Peña, all of our team leading this process. I think we got so much community input from the community meetings to all of our comments on Thought Exchange, just to help us feel more confident and secure in our decisions as a Board member. So, just a quick shout-out and thank you to the team leading that effort.
Yes, I will definitely say that. The team that has been preparing all this has done such an extensive amount of work, and I do appreciate, you know, that's why this Board has grown so much, is our conversations can be, you know, kind of honest and look at what's best. So, like I said, I can't say anything more eloquent. I'll say something then more simplified is, I also caution that a lot of times we look at this from an adult lens, and at the bottom of these decisions are kids. And if you talk to the students at Mount Whitney who just got already college credits for a computer science program that's there, or kids that were top in ag and have gone to the colleges of their choice, I see one of our principals with some great kids out there that are at their colleges of choice because of Mount Whitney and those programs. There are a lot of kids that are super proud of their school. And also, I have two eighth graders that are going into high school next year, and all they care about is going where their friends are. And they will have a great experience, no matter what high school that is and where they end up. So, you know, sometimes we get a little bit bogged down with adults' thinking, and there's kids at the bottom of this, some of which are, you know, five and six years old. So, I will now close the public hearing and reconvene regular session, may have a motion to approve the resolution approving attendance, boundary adjustments, and notice of exemption under California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll motion.
And I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Case Pierce Saleno and a second by Board Member Belt. Call for a vote.
Student Board votes yes. Motion passes 7-0.
Superintendent Schrum?
Thank you very much. Thank you, President Gaby. Board members, I also want to echo Dr. Vegas's comments and our team. You know, as we heard from our community throughout this process and tonight and from our Board members, boundaries are challenging, right? You get used to a school, you buy a house, you, whatever it might be. And so that's why I want to bring people back to why it's so important that what this Board has done in passing of a strategic plan and the actions within the strategic plan is about making sure we have opportunities wherever students are. We talked about advanced learning. We have a whole action so that it's not just one or two schools that have robotics or Odyssey of the Mind. It's at every elementary school, right? I heard PTA and PTO and parent organizations come up tonight. We have an action in our strategic plan where every single school in Visalia Unified is expected to have a parent organization. And so then it's incumbent upon us as the district then to support the schools as needed to make that happen, which is different, right, depending on circumstances. But the option to have or not to have with our strategic plan now is off the table. You can't not have some of these things. And so I think that's going to be important as we go through these types of conversations for our community to see and understand and maybe get rid of some of the myths and stereotypes and stories that have been generated around certain schools that don't match their reality. And so, you know, one of the things that I want to mention and a couple of things, one, when it comes to long-range planning, we will be engaged, re-engaging in that conversation. We've talked about that. We do have Board policy around what priority the Board places on how those decisions are made. So, we will have a workshop where we'll look over that and talk about what different types of things might mean, and then engage our community with what would our community like to see along those things. So, that will be happening this spring and into the summer, so stay tuned for further information about how you can be engaged in that. And now that our Board has taken action on our changes to be effective for the 25-26 school year, starting as early as tomorrow, communication will be going out to all of our impacted families. They'll be receiving letters via mail, of course, that takes a little while, also electronic. That's also going to talk about where the assignment is, our transfer processes, and when the community can expect information around if I'm interested in a transfer to stay or to go or to do whatever that might be, what that process will be. There'll be a deliberate period of time before that's open so that everyone can receive communication and have equal opportunity to engage in that process, including support opportunities at certain sites for families that might need additional help with completing and understanding that process. And again, I mentioned a little bit about the strategic plan. The other piece I would mention too, I want to give a shout-out to our principals who have been involved in this process because as, over the past few weeks, we held some community meetings for families impacted potentially by these boundary changes, and the receiving principals were all at those meetings so that those families could get to see like, okay, you know, I love where I am, and I might be going to this different place, but it doesn't have to be an unknown. And so now they've had an opportunity to see the principal. They're going to receive special opportunities to visit the site, a special invitation for like an open house type event, and also kind of like a school field trip thing where kids, obviously with parent permission, that might be going to a different school will have the opportunity to go and visit it during the school day with their friends. And so we're going to be doing everything we can as a district to help families through any type of transition process that they might be receiving, but that's led and put together by our principals, and so I just really want to say how much I appreciate them. And also, it's difficult too for a family, maybe that's been at a site and now it's going to be going to another school. So, those principals as well partnering, saying, you know what, we're going to miss you, but you're going to love this place you're going, and here's why. And so just a shout-out to our principals and our community and our Board for engaging in this process, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. All right. Public hearing and resolution to approve voluntary closure of Global Learning Charter School and Notice of Exemption under California Environmental Quality Act. I will now open the public hearing to allow for public comment on this item. Chief Financial Officer Nathan Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gaby, members of the Board and Superintendent Schrum. So, this is a second reading on this item as well, the resolution to voluntarily close a Global Learning Charter School. As Mr. Kerr mentioned, we did have community meetings at each of the impacted sites. Global Learning had a meeting as well where parents were invited to attend, and we had a great turnout. And Mr. DeMayo's team and Ed Services have been working on the process for transfers, which will be shared, as Mr. Schrum just mentioned, with those families as early as tomorrow. So, again, this is a second reading on this resolution.
All right. Is there any public comment on this issue? I don't have any green forms. Good. Okay, any Board member comments?
I have one. I just wanted to say thank you to our leadership, leadership over at GLC, Principal Nguyen, and also really wanted to give a huge shout-out to John Oresner, who has been leading a community schools initiative, roughly a team of 15 to 20 folks, everyone from city council members to community members, to staff, to parents, who've been reimagining the future of this elementary school and recognizing that as we transition into whatever the name of our new elementary school will be, many of the students that we are serving will be the same. And I know we are having conversations with the California Department of Education about reapplying under this new name, and hopefully that's able to work out, but, you know, potentially in line to receive over $1 million as part of this community schools initiative. And so I want to highlight and think about, you know, should that not work out for whatever reason? Should the California Department of Education not allow us to transition or to continue with the community schools grant under this new name? I would like our district to specifically think about how we can invest additional dollars into this elementary school to ensure that they are able to plan for their future and not, you know, in any way diminish the work that that committee has been working on over the past year. So, I do want us to be thoughtful about if this transition doesn't work out from CDE's perspective to allow us to continue with the community schools grant, how can our district come to the table with that funding to say, we are here to support you, and we don't want those dreams to fade away in any way? Thank you.
All right. Any other Board member comments? And I think a few of us definitely expressed our gratitude towards GLC and some of their founding and continuing, teachers, staff, administration there for the work they've done. Not only have they made remarkable growth for student achievement, but also just what they have modeled as professionals and, you know, just that strong PLC of teachers not only mentoring students, we heard it last time, mentoring families, mentoring each other. They truly take in the new teachers and make them part of a team and are committed to their success. And, you know, there's a quote, I'll learn from Megan here, try not to say it better, but, you know, there's a quote by Margaret Mead that says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has, and they definitely are the change." So, thank you to GLZ, GLC. And with that, I will close the public hearing and reconvene regular session. Can I call for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
On a motion by Board Member Viegas and a second by Board Member Casebeersaleno, call for a vote.
Student Board votes yes, motion passes, 7-0.
All right. And we look forward to continuing to see great things at that site. 2024-25 VUSD First Interim Financial Report, CFO Nathan Hernandez.
Good evening again. So, this item is our first interim financial report. So, this is our kind of check-in on our budget from our adopted budget through October 31st of 2024. And so, as we've looked through our foundations, the, the budget document is really the tool that the board has to ensure that there, we're meeting our core beliefs and commitments. So, the budget provides the resources that allow us to ensure that all students can achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth. And the board's role in that and approving our budget is what sets the conditions for student learning in our district. So, again, as I shared, the purpose of this report is really to certify to our county office and to the state that we are fiscally solvent, that we are able to meet our obligations and we have a multi-year projection where we look at the next two years as well as meet our minimum reserve requirement. We are just under 9% in our, in our reserve within our general fund. And so we have met both our reserve requirement and our multi-year projection. When we look at our multi-year projection, I will share too that we are in deficit spending. We did that, we planned to deficit spend this year and next year as we're spending down some of our ending balances, learning recovery funds and so forth. And so we're working on that process now so that we can bring you recommendations over this year and next year so we bring our budget back in line. So, this is where we are in our process. We're in December. In January, the governor will issue his, his initial proposal for the 2526 budget. So, we're always working in multiple budget years. In January, we'll bring you last year's final. So, our next report on the current fiscal year will come in March. That will be through January 31st and that's our second interim budget report. So, lots of numbers on this screen. This is kind of an overall summary within our general fund. I won't go through each, each item there, but as you can see, the column to the left, adopted budget, that was our adopted budget when, on June, June 30th or July 1st. The next column is where we are at first interim. Then that final column is the difference between adopted budget and first interim. So, I'll go through our revenues and our expenditures in a little bit more detail just to kind of highlight what some of these changes were. You'll notice on our LCFF, not much change over the course of first interim and that doesn't typically change from budget adoption. But I will note that our LCFF, our LCFF revenues, our local control funding formula for this year are less than last year. We had a 1% COLA, but we're also coming out of the three-year average ADA kind of hold harmless period. So, even though there was a COLA, we did receive less revenue in the current fiscal year, which kind of led to some of that deficit spending that we'll talk through in our budget. Federal revenues, we had an increase in Title I plus we always at this time post our carryover from our prior fiscal years. And so, a larger increase there in our federal dollars. Same on the state side, we have carryover. Half of that really, about $5 million is from our CTE programs, programs that carry those funds over, strong workforce and ed tech. We also had carryover from some other programs. This kind of masked a little bit, some reductions that we had though, our expanded learning opportunities program, our ELOP. We had some reduced funding in our ELOP, but overall state funding shows as, as an increased number. And then other local revenues or interest and, and some other small things, grants and so forth. So, overall, $23 million increase in revenue. But when we look at the next slide, $38 million increase in expenditures. So, that's where we're, we're talking about deficit spending. And in another slide, I'll show you what that kind of true deficit is and where we are operationally. But again, a lot of different carryover programs, you carry over the revenue, you carry over expenditures on the, on the same side. So, a lot of that is, was LCAP carryover as well as those CTE programs, some facilities, some one-time things. So, we'll get to what our, what our actual operating budget is. On the unrestricted budget, so the other reports was our, our full budget, this is just unrestricted, again, comparing our adoption to first interim. And this is where the majority of our expenditures live, the majority of our staffing lives. You see, we had a deficit at adoption of 1.7 million minor in our $300 million budget. And that grew a bit. Again, that was carryover. So, we had carryover within our, within our LCAP. We have carryover in things like school site donations. They don't spend the money in one year where they receive the revenue, we carry it to the next year as well as some miscellaneous materials and supplies. And so an increase of 8 million in, in our deficit there. But when we back out those one-time costs and carryover, you see our true operational deficit is just over a million dollars. So, kind of where we were when we started the year. So, when we look at, I'm sorry, this is our one-time funding. And I'm, I'm sure you can read that because I can, I can't read that from here, but if you look in the big box, total dollars allocated to us in those one-time funds. So, this was from 2020 to today. So, these were the COVID monies and other federal state funds. Over $211 million came to the district over that time period. We've spent $184 million and the $26 million is what we have left from learning recovery that we're going to spend this year and next year, again, as part of that five-year learning recovery plan. We're in our last two years of that. And so this is what we're working on now through our LCAP process to be able to bring our budget again back into balance over these next two years. One thing to note, about half of that was spent on staff cost over those five years. The other half went to things like facilities and HVAC and one-time cost. We bought a whole bunch of Chromebooks, if you remember. So, lots of materials and supplies were purchased with these funds as well. So, this is our multi-year projection, again, just our unrestricted budget where we are in the current year, that $10 million deficit. When we look at next year, we back out those one-time costs and, and carryover, still at a slight deficit. And so we will be bringing recommendations this year to, to bring that budget back to balance. And then you see in that third out year, still a slight deficit, but we will be able to address that. Now, this does use assumptions that where there's going to be cost of living adjustments from the state, additional revenues. We know already that the 2.93 that we're projecting for next year is probably a little high, but it's not as significant a difference as it has been in prior years. So, again, at second interim, we'll have a better idea of what this is. We'll bring that to the board in March. We'll have a clear picture of our budget for next year. So, as I mentioned, January 10th, the governor will issue his initial proposal for next year. Right now, the state budget does look better than what we were seeing earlier in the year. That's kind of had that, kind of because of that rebound in the stock market, which is a good thing and not a great thing because so much of the state's money comes from capital gains and personal income taxes, which tend to fluctuate as we've talked about. Projected COLA right now is 2.46 and it does seem that the state will be able to fund that COLA as well as have some additional funds to address any other state needs. We are in kind of a flat enrollment projection, even though we have one more year of TK growth, we still, we still stay pretty flat even with that additional growth. So, that's something we'll continue to watch. And then, of course, as we talked about, the expiration of our one-time funds and we'll bring recommendations back to the board through this budget cycle. And with that, I would be available to questions.
Is there any public comment? Any board member comment? All right. May I have a motion to approve the 2024-25 VUSD First Interim Financial Report?
I'll move. I'll second.
All right. On a motion by Board Member Goboin and a second by Board Member Odo?
Student Board votes yes, motion passes, 7-0.
May I have a motion to approve the warrant list for October 25th through November 22nd, 2024?
I move to make my final motion.
All right. On a motion by Board Member Casebeersaleno and a second by Board Member Odo?
Student Board votes yes, six yays and one abstention, motion passes.
All right. This meeting is now adjourned.